Okay, let's go ahead and start.
And I'm ready.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, that's me, right? Starting.
That would be your cue.
Call to order. And consent agenda for planning commission minutes dated August 11. Who do we have on tonight?
It looks like we have a full house.
Oh, okay. I can't, I just see you.
So you probably have it on cycle, so whoever's talking will show. Do you see a button that says view in the upper right-hand corner? Or are you on an iPad?
iPad says record, or are you seeing?
That's probably in the left. It's.
See here, okay, I got more info now, I did something, let's see.
You're looking for something that says view.
Participants, oh.
Looks like you're down at the bottom. It's in a different spot than than the ribbon at the bottom.
Obviously. I haven't practiced this, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
So Russ, you said you're not on a computer, you're on a.
I'm on a. Right.
Okay.
I got you, Jacob.
Yeah, there is a way to see all of us at once, but I'm just not sure how to navigate you there on an iPad and a tablet.
Yeah, it's upper right.
Upper left, how's that? That did it, thank you.
You found it, okay.
Cool.
Awesome.
All right, so we're all here, all right. Okay, consent agenda of planning commission minutes dated August 11.
We accept them.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Move, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. It's been accepted. Do we have any topics from the floor? I don't see anybody else on here, unless my screen is not big enough.
There we go.
Okay. All right, new council adopted Zoom meeting minutes, policies, guidelines, and commission. Operations excused, absences, et cetera. I read that thing.
Yeah, so the reason we put this on here is we didn't know if some planning commissioners were just not going to participate at all. And there is a provision in the planning commission code, which we've never had to use since I've been here. But it says that a member who is absent from three consecutive meetings without an excuse is approved by the planning commission is rebuttably presumed to be in non-conformance of duty, and they can get kicked off. And so one of the questions that, well, the reason we put this thing on the agenda was one of the questions would be, okay, well, if someone is uncomfortable on Zoom, would that be grounds to kick him off? But as you can tell, the background of two of our planning commissioners don't look like a home at all. And Catherine and Sheila are here at City Hall using a couple of city laptops. And we have a lot of laptops, and ultimately, planning department is going to have two freebies. So I don't, I don't know if we need to get into the excused absence thing. But obviously, you know, at this point, we have a policy that says all meetings need to be Zoom, no in-person until further notice. And that was one way we can accommodate people who may have outdated hardware or are uncomfortable with the platform.
My hardware's crammed up and it's pretty darned old.
Well, I did send out an email and I was asking everybody last week, it was like, you know, is everybody comfortable doing this? And most people, most people are, would just, some people said they'd like to really meet in person, but that's not, obviously, we can't do that. So I'm glad Sheila and Catherine found a device.
Well, thank the staff for taking care of it and making sure it all got worked out, so nobody would be excluded. Because that was my thing, that was my holdout to in-person meetings, is I wasn't going to just uninclude somebody based on technology. So until accommodation could be guaranteed, I was pretty dragging my feet, because I didn't want to leave anybody behind.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Yeah, I just, it's just part of inclusion. I know it doesn't sound like it to people, but this is reasonable accommodation. You know, whether it, I, you know, IT or a ramp, it's still reasonable accommodation, that's all.
Jacob, do you know if we would have enough laptops if someone from the public wanted to testify but didn't have technology and needed accommodations at City Hall?
Well, I think we would have to accommodate. And I'm sure we could figure out something. So just so the planning commission knows, and I think that's a good point, Jenny, is the city has some COVID money and purchased laptops. And so there's going to be some more laptops going around. The two that Catherine and Sheila are using are a couple of hand-me-downs. So those are going to be our free-for-alls. But, you know, those are easy to just set up and sit here, you're on Zoom.
Yeah, I'm on a city laptop now, I have access to the city's documents and network at home, which is great.
Yeah, so staff, certain staff got laptops too. That way, we don't have to be using our personal stuff in a working capacity.
I think that's the right way to go, it was a good decision on the part of the city.
So I don't have much else to say on that one, unless there's more comments from you all.
Okay, not adhering any. Okay, planning commission term expirations, who we have?
Okay, so this year, you know, every once in a while, well, every year, there's one person. This year is one of the two people expirations. So we have both Dan and Greg are our terms who are expiring at the end of the year. And as you know, whenever this happens, we have a couple of questions to ask, one, Dan and Greg. And if you want to think about it, that's fine, too. But if you know for sure, do you wish to continue past December of this year?
Good, great.
Well, I would like to. It's going to be dependent on what the city council decides.
Oh, yeah, yep. Well, as you know, we love process, it's all about process, and the first thing we got to confirm is whether or not an incumbent wishes to continue. So Greg does.
I'm willing to also.
Okay, you're willing to, or you want to?
Well.
He's doing us a favor.
Don't make us feel bad.
I want to.
Okay.
But that shouldn't have a decision on, you know, make the council's decision whether I want to or not.
Yeah.
The code says more than two terms, don't we automatically list?
Yes, we do automatically list after two terms.
I mean, we've, I mean, long before I was number city councillor, they had people with semi-lifetime appointments, and that's when that got put in there. It's because we got accused of not giving other people a chance to be part of government. So we have to list it and post it, and if nobody applies, nobody applies. Or if no qualified candidate applies, no qualified candidate applies, because we all know that that's happened a lot. We get applications, but they're not necessarily anybody that should be serving on the planning commission.
And I'm pretty sure I'm at my second term, right?
Yes, both of you are two terms or more, and so in both cases, we are obligated to advertise. But there's a second question, is there any objection from any other commissioner on the continuance of Dan and Greg?
I appreciate their leadership and thought process. I'm really pleased if they will be still here.
And both retain their positions.
Yeah, I think they're valuable assets to the planning commission.
Okay, great, so no smack talk, okay.
Those fries paid well, didn't they?
So we'll have to advertise, and then, you know, we'll have to chat with councillor Carlson as kind of that first line of the council on appointments and all that stuff. And we may as well see who wants to be on the interview committee if we have those opportunities. And this could be something that could happen in the next one, two, three months. But might as well figure that out now. And obviously, Dan and Greg, who have been on those committees before, would be an inappropriate choice in this case.
Russ, what are you doing?
And we need, typically, we've had two planning commissioners and the city councillor as our interview panel.
I'm volunteer.
Okay, Sheila?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm appropriate, since I'm so new.
Russ, you need to be the other one, I was volunteering, but I think Russ needs to be the other one.
I'll do it.
Russ and Sheila?
Yeah.
Okay. And don't worry, Jennifer, you'll have your chance.
You can vote us out another day.
Two terms later.
So that'll be something that'll evolve here in the next couple of coming months. But there's really nothing else to talk about at this point, so we can move on.
All right, urban renewal plan amendment.
That's me.
Okay.
Yes, so maybe you all remember, except maybe Jennifer, remember when we adopted the original urban renewal plan? It was in 2017. So it's been just over three years now. And we have found that our revenue projections are not meeting expectations, mostly due to Armstrong World Industries leaving. When we adopted our plan in 2017, Armstrong was actually planning an expansion. And so as part of our revenue projections, we had a pretty fairly large investment anticipated that not only did not occur, but they left. So instead of $250,000 this past year, we had $150 in our urban renewal agency. And so just backing up, urban renewal is a funding plan that we use to fund projects that the city prioritizes as important economic drivers to the region. So I have here the original projects list. I just wanted to briefly show it, because it's been three years, and maybe, maybe this body doesn't remember too well what the original intent of urban renewal was. But I think it's worth sharing for the public, too, who may watch this. So you all should see my screen. Can I get a head nod? That's working.
But I can't read it, because my eyes are getting older.
It's working.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good. Yeah, so it's kind of broken up into different categories. This is from the original plan. This first category is site preparation, and so it's things for the waterfront redevelopment project, things like utilities on the site. Columbia View Park expansion is one of the projects listed. Public access along the water is a listed project. I'm just kind of cycling through these quickly, because I think it's important to look back at what's the purpose of urban renewal, and it's projects that we're all kind of aware of and are trying to move forward. And urban renewal is our kind of leveraging funding tool that we can use with grants. So there's some wayfinding improvements, which we've already seen some of, we haven't used urban renewal for it, but we may in the future. There's a lot of transportation improvements in the urban renewal plan. As you remember, the corridor master plan had a number of improvements that we're hoping to fund with urban renewal, and so that's in Holton. There's also a lot of transportation improvements that lead to the waterfront, that riverfront connector plan that we adopted. All of those projects are included in the urban renewal plan. And then there's some Highway 30 projects from the corridor plan as well. And something I'm excited about is the storefront facade improvement program that we hope to fund. So that's just a little taste of what we hope to be able to fund if urban renewal starts taking off. So the plan amendment, that brings us to where we are now. So whenever you amend your urban renewal boundary over a certain percentage, over 1%, you have to basically go through a re-adoption process. And so we are consulting with the different taxing districts, we have a county briefing, there's a public hearing before city council. You'll notice in your utility bills, there's going to be an announcement of the public hearing. So we send that to all of our utility billing customers about the urban renewal amendment. So it's a pretty extensive public involvement process, just to amend the boundary. And one of those things is the commissioner briefing, which we're doing now, or I'm sorry, yeah, the planning commissioner briefing. So what are we amending? So I'll show you the map. So we want to add and remove acreage to the urban renewal boundary. So this gray is the existing urban renewal area as it was adopted in 2017. And what we're trying to do is take out properties that are not contributing to the urban renewal revenues, and add properties that will contribute to the urban renewal revenue. So as part of that, you may remember, there was a housing project that we approved on Gable Road. So just for orientation, this is Gable, and here's Highway 30.
Across the road from Walmart.
Yep, exactly. So we're proposing to remove that property, it was in the agency. But we know now that they received funding to make it a subsidized housing project through NOAA. And so it's going to be owned by a nonprofit, which is not taxable. And so that doesn't benefit the agency to keep that large property in. So in its place, so we're taking out some residential land, but then we're also adding Greystone Estates, which is up by the DMV here. They're getting close to their final plat, so we know they're going to be submitting building permits pretty soon. And so if we can add that area to the agency, we're going to see some major bumps in revenue. So those are two, one addition, one subtraction. The other two big changes, we're taking out a parcel on the Boise White Paper site that has a number of environmental constraints due to the riparian corridor and also wetlands. It's a fairly large chunk here. And then in its place, we want to add some industrial land that has more opportunity. So this is the Port of Columbia County-owned McNulty Phase 1, McNulty Industrial Park Phase 1 area here. And they worked with the state to do a shovel readiness project, which means they mitigated some wetlands on the property. And so we feel like that's a more likely candidate for some industrial development. Again, just trying to improve the revenue stream for the agency. There's some smaller additions up here. One is a correction, it should have been added in the 2017, it was part of a different parcel. We're adding a really, a small 10-lot subdivision here, Hannah Place. And then we found a property that's actually in the county's jurisdiction, so that's just a small correction right here. But that's about it, we're actually proposing to remove more acreage. It's a net loss of seven acres, but we're prioritizing projects that are likely to occur with our additions. And so we've done some revenue projection forecasts with the amendments, and it's looking like, you know, these will definitely help our revenue stream. We may actually be able to fund parts of those projects that we went through early on, in the next five years even. So this amendment will just kind of kickstart our ability to actually see some shovels hit the ground on the veneer site in particular. So there's a very specific recommendation that we have tonight. And I'll open it up for questions, but I want to leave it on the suggested motion, because it's governed by state statutes, what we say. So let me pull it up here. Does anyone have questions while I'm scrolling to this?
We've got a question on the Armstrong property.
Yeah.
So you lost that tax money because they left. Because they left, you're not receiving any taxes on that property?
Yeah, so what we lost, what we lost there is equipment. Like, the equipment is also part of the assessed value. And so when they pull all that equipment out, the agency value just decreased massively.
Okay, but isn't that sort of knee-jerk, because it's going to, something else is going to come back, and I mean.
Yeah, so we're not proposing to remove the Armstrong property for that very reason.
Okay.
Yeah. It's still going to be in the agency if development ever occurs. And yeah, if they find a buyer and they bring in all this equipment, that'll only help, that'll only help our revenue projections.
I'm aware that they have hired consultants to do like assessments, environmental assessments, and are kind of moving forward to determine how to clean up the site, and it's a DQ cleanup. So let's see, kind of get, I believe that means if, once they get those things a little more known, then a buyer might be more interested than in that known scary site that might have pollutions that they don't know what to get into.
Yeah, I think.
Be required to clean it up.
Jacob sat in on a meeting from a, was it the seller, Jacob, that you were sitting?
Potential buyer.
Oh, buyer, okay.
There's a lot of pollutants.
Does the city need to get the other taxing districts?
Yes. Yeah, so we sent letters out to all the different taxing districts a couple days ago, it was last Thursday. So they received a formal copy of the amendment, and then we did call downs to just ask them if they had any questions and explain to them why we're going through this process. The biggest affected taxing district, overlapping taxing district, is actually the city. We are most financially impacted by our own urban renewal agency. So yeah, there wasn't any pushback in the initial calls, I think they all want to see the projects list happen. And I think part of the no pushback so far is we vetted the plan very well in 2017. We had a series of meetings and made sure, we did board presentations to Columbia River Fire and Rescue, the school district, the port. Now we have PCC, the aquatic district. So, yeah.
So does it, does it also have to go to a vote of the people?
So urban renewal is not mandated to go to the people. Now, if enough people signed a petition against it, then it would go as a ballot measure.
Be a referral.
Yeah, exactly.
On these apartments that are across from Walmart going in, it's not a nonprofit now. When that becomes, as I've seen before on projects like that, they use that to build it out, and then they eventually turn into a profitable, they sell the nonprofit after so many years. Will that be just revert to a taxable property?
Oh, I thought that the federal tax, or that the federal funding required it in perpetuity. Like, usually, it's on the deed.
I, I'm not familiar with the recent style and what they're doing, but I've seen that before happen, so it's.
Oh, okay.
It's an avenue to get money and projects going. And obviously, you know, tax-wise, it's a huge benefit.
Sure, yeah.
Question, okay.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that. I do know there's probably a time duration that it would have to be owned by the nonprofit, and so that entire time, it wouldn't be getting any revenue to the agency. But I, yeah.
A good example, a good example are the apartments that Community Action Team built, or in partnership built, up there by their facility in Holton. And if I remember right, there was a 25-year period where it had to be affordable housing with a potential 25 additional years for 50. So even that one wasn't forever, but the duration was substantial.
Right, which is, that's the life of the agency, really.
Okay.
So the specific motion in this staff report is about conformance to the comprehensive plan. That's kind of your wheelhouse, is that the urban renewal plan amendment conforms to the comp plan. And so whoever, unless there's more questions, but I have the motion up. And it would be great if someone could read it in its entirety, I know it's kind of lengthy, but we just want to make sure that we're meeting all of the state requirements for passage of this amendment.
Jenny, on that parcel on the industrial park site, the southerly one that was removed, it looks like, it looks like that tax lot line still persists on the assessor records. Though that's, that's a part of parcel one resulting from the ACSP parcel. So that's not, that's not a whole property unto itself, it's part of the greater piece.
Oh, I see.
But it's, but it still looks like it's a separate tax lot.
Okay.
I don't know how much that matters.
What operations are out there now in that parcel?
Nothing.
Wetlands.
Yeah.
It's a huge. Frogs and salamanders?
Yes. Exactly.
Well, I'm willing to read it if, if I go ahead. The motion. If somebody else would like to do it, I'll go ahead. I move that the St. Helens Planning Commission finds, based upon the information provided in the staff report, that no projects are being changed, and nor prior conformance to comprehensive plan findings are being changed. That the St. Helens Urban Renewal Plan Amendment 2 conforms with the St. Helens Comprehensive Plan, and further recommend that the St. Helens City Council adopt the proposed St. Helens Urban Renewal Plan Amendment 2.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, well, let me go, let me just go around for, make sure we get this right. Vice Chair Carey?
Aye, yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Samling?
Aye.
Lawrence?
Aye.
And Webster?
Aye.
And Pugsley?
Aye.
It's, well, no nays is passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Unshare your screen, Jenny?
Yes.
Okay, planning department activity reports.
It's a pretty full report. I don't know if you have any questions on that.
Okay.
We did get our first parklet application.
I saw them building it.
Where's that?
They shouldn't be building it, I had a voicemail at four, and I didn't call him back. I think he's trying to pilot it, it's running dogs.
Yeah, they were, they were looking at lumber, that's what we'll call it, looking at lumber.
Yeah, they were, I think they were trying to figure out some design questions, but they were using some parking spaces to do it.
Sounds like a cumbersome permit process.
Well, it's, it's, there's basically a couple phases to it. First, there's the concept. So like in their case, they gave us the concept, and we had to consider some things, and they wanted five spaces. And based on staff communication, internal meeting, you know, we narrowed it down to four, and.
Are you talking about?
Are you talking about parking spaces?
That's correct, yeah. So I guess we should back up what's a parklet? We talked about this with the commission way back in the corridor plan, so 2014 adopting it in 2015. And so we got our first application recently, of course, as a result of COVID. And and the first phase is the conceptual where you you give the city the concept. And then we kind of massage our ideas and then, okay, well, you can do this. These are some of the concerns we have to alleviate. And then they give us a final construction design to address some of those concerns. And then they build it and we inspect it.
I'm puzzled here.
It's it's wordy when you read it, but it's it's fairly straightforward.
I'm I'm curious. I've seen the inside of both of those buildings. I know in the past they have enjoyed having outdoor seating for customers in summer like weather. Is it more of this or is it something beyond what I've observed?
I'm gonna share my screen here.
So for years, we have had a simple permit to allow seating on the sidewalk. And and that's been utilized quite a bit during COVID. And for years, but the parklet is once you get beyond the sidewalk into the parking spaces. And here's some examples and illustrations of that.
But that's still only temporary, not permanent, right?
That's correct.
How long? What is it maximum of six months or a year?
Six month intervals.
So they can reapply.
So this would be likely applied for for the summer season and then the winter season and go back? Or am I jumping to wrong conclusions?
Well, obviously, people don't want to sit outside when it's pouring. And it will be interesting to see if anybody wants to propose a shelter, outdoor shelter proposal.
Let me, Jacob, let me ask you this. Is there something written in the rules that say that the parklet has to be continuously used? I can foresee that an applicant would request the parklet, use it for three months and then the weather changes. And that use goes by the wayside for the next three months. Then they come back and they reapply for another six months. Is there something to stop them from doing that?
Parking and politics.
That means no.
Jake, what's a possibility or and Jenny too of the city opening up some of the Boise property temporarily for parking downtown? Just a temporary, there's, you know, so much dirt that nothing's happening on.
At this point with COVID and everything else, I I would say that anything's possible. I mean, my primary concern is to keep businesses in business.
That's what I'm thinking. You know, if they're they're going to have the parklet and I'm for them. If in downtown Boise, they're everywhere and they're wonderful, but parking wise, they've got the parking too.
Right, I mean, I think the purpose of this is to push them out away from the front of the building so people can still get by with the
Right.
or what have you, because right now it's pretty tight. And when they do this, that means that they're not going to inhibit pedestrian traffic.
I understand that, but five parking spaces down there is.
Yeah, I know that we've opened the Cascade property both over there out from the roof for parking on Thursdays. It's still open every Thursday. I think that until there are barricades or something out there from the dock side, because they just don't want anybody driving out there and destroying the undercarriage of their car and then holding us responsible. So I think that's the issue is we just don't want free range driving over there because if somebody hurts themselves or hurts kids that aren't paying attention, that could be a real liability. But it's definitely not off the table because, I mean, I know the mayor himself is like, whatever we could do to help small business. We've been out there, you know, beating the streets, trying to get money for COVID and trying to make sure that all the businesses have what they need.
Right.
And if they're willing. I'm I'm encouraged by the amount of restaurants that have reopened. I'm not sure there isn't any that are still closed to in person dining. I think the last one has reopened for in person dining.
I believe you're right, but I know even today I went down and walked the Boise property. I was the only one down there and needless to say, because of the smoke, I'm sure that there wasn't a lot of people eating, but the Plymouth tables were full.
Yeah, I I've gone down there and eaten out like on 13 nights nights because I'm not a crowd person. And I don't need the music that loud, but I've gotten food from one of the restaurants and gone out and sat at the picnic tables along the waterfront.
Right.
Loud enough for me at that distance. And there's plenty of people enjoying the space right now. Nobody's outside with the smoke, but.
Yeah, no, there was no one out there today, but.
I mean, I was like, let's figure out and find some tents because you think about all the beer festivals that happened well into October.
Oh, yes.
I do garden things that start up in March and whatever we can do to support local businesses, local entrepreneurs. I'm all about trying to help people and the state is really out there. Business Oregon is out there trying to help. Travel Oregon is trying to help people stay in business.
Because I don't know what kind of barricades we would need to to just open up, even if it was 20 parking spaces.
Right, it's just a matter of the of feeling like it's like it's controlled. And that's not city council, that's the police and public works that go wait, it's not safe down there and they, you know, have somebody make sure they clear the property at 10 o'clock and relock the gates is what it involves is they don't leave them open overnight. Is we did that once for during Kiwanis Parade and we had two campers out there. And it took us a while to get people that decided they would camp there out.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking of the businesses.
For sure.
You know, I mean, even the dock side is wondered about. You know, opening some of it up.
For sure, that was the one place I thought of for sure because she's got that space at the end of her building. And she if she parklited there, she'd need additional parking.
Right.
Tiffany was in town for a few weeks and my understanding is she's left to go back.
Yeah, she and Darren left, but patio was open up, but still they could use a little more parking.
For sure, I I I don't think that we've said no to any any approach, any reasonable approach regarding, you know, temporary use of parking, especially given COVID.
Is the police chief the one you have to talk to?
I think it might be best to go through John because I think that he knows where all the little skeletons are buried whenever that gets approached. Because it's, I think it's the police chief and public works that both do pushback about safety out there.
Okay, well, I'm not talking about opening the whole area, just.
Right. Right, and I think that nobody's pushed it far enough to realize that if we just put those, whatever you call those barricades are when they do construction to kind of.
Yeah.
Temporary barricades?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, yeah.
A little bit more than cones and tape.
Very definitely.
But you know, now that the fences are all down, there's there's very little that we're impeding from people doing down there. You know, if people really want to do stuff, they can get around those rocks.
Oh, yes, yes, it's just the parking to be able to.
I will, I will definitely take this back to our meeting with the first, the very first permit of a parklet. Because the first pushback of a parklet is even though we have double the parking that is needed for our downtown, there will always be people every time a parking space is blocked that will think that it's the end of the world. So.
Well, it's a good time when you're losing five.
Right, I worry about those that are down on the ends. I worry about in particular the dock side because they are a ways down there. That's a couple of blocks from the city lot. So that's a ways for people to hike.
Well, I know Darren was talking about having that opened up. I mean, not the whole thing, but just.
Sorry, dog.
There's some parking.
I'm giving you.
Last year at about the time of the fair, we went down there and they seemed to have the whole street blocked off and there were people on huge stilts and then mariachi band and all sorts of things going across the road. It was delightful.
One special day.
It would be nice to have another special day like that.
Well, you have to fit it within the the guardrails of COVID.
Well.
Have to promise that there'll never be more than 250 people in the space. So that's a difficult, difficult needle to thread.
It is, but I'm not, if my idea is that I would like to keep that concept open. I can't can't believe that COVID is going to last forever. Somebody is going to wind up making a vaccine and then things will be more able to turn around.
Right, no, definitely the cities is trying to keep some level of continuity to where the businesses don't feel like we forgot them.
How is 13 nights going?
They cut even. It was never a moneymaker, but with having it ticketed, there's not as many vendors. But what I've heard is that they are paying for the bands. And that's all that they ever intend to do is just to pay for the bands.
Well, the other night when I was down and it was one vendor, because I forgot it was Thursday, but I could park anywhere. I could park in a city lot.
And it's, it tends to go hot and cold with the music and the weather. Because I'll go down one week and I had no idea who they were and there's people everywhere. And then I go down the next week and there's three cars.
I know people are complaining about this 250 for Halloween town.
250.
Thing people are not happy about. Locals.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing that I guess I you know, it's a group decision. The one thing that I was pleased with is that it's only for the Saturday and Sunday. And the the event is going to be so beyond small that you might not even notice it is my, I'm not even sure where it's going to go. The whole state could lock down and would be a nonstarter. But the locals I talked to say that if they want to get a picture with the pumpkin and they have to do it on Thursday, they're happy to do it on Thursday. The idea that we would just roll up Halloween and not put it out, they thought was criminal.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, somebody made the comment that we shouldn't be having an event. And I watched that man from Sturgis, South Dakota beg people not to come and 50,000 people came. So I don't, I don't know if you can make people come or make people not come.
I'll have parking in front of my house for a change.
There's that. The the only criteria that I've put forth with 13 nights or any street event is nothing can be not cancelable. We have to be able to cancel at the last minute.
Right, yes.
As of where we are. And it's like if something's not working, we're done.
So I went to two of the 13 night concerts. People, the public was having a wonderful time. Lots of old folks and medium aged folks dancing to the musicians. And the carnival didn't come to town. It was way back in the beginning when 13 nights first began. It was sweet and local. And that's what it was like the two times that I went. I really appreciated it. I don't ever want to see Hit Machine in town ever again.
They're playing at the fairgrounds. But I, my understanding is that for veterans or seniors, it's only like 450 for for the 13 nights.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the entry fee. I'm concerned.
We're having to figure out another way to operate. And I mean, I don't think there's any perfect answer.
If there's a band that that's coming there and performing live, I am happy to pay enough so that they get paid. If it's Hit Machine, I'm mad.
Are you done with Hit Machine?
I'm all the way done with Hit Machine.
Were you always done with Hit Machine or just because it's oversaturated?
Jennifer back, Jennifer back to the parklet.
Sorry, my bad.
Yeah.
I would like, I would like to ask, I would like to ask a question about the parklet. Been waiting for a while. Anyway, thanks, thank you, Jenny, though.
Yeah, I just, you know, it feels funny to not have 100 people waiting to talk, so sorry, my bad.
That's okay.
No, no, I, we heard, we heard a lot, it was good. I had a question that was asked about the parklet, is that handled, the permits handled by the building department or who handles the permits for that?
It's a joint effort.
Okay.
Yeah, it's we we all reviewed it, Public Works, Building Official. Our city administrator is.
The requirements, the OLCC expanding the service area?
So they'll get their OLCC permit separately. We don't have jurisdiction over that.
Yeah, but you typically have to have that before you can issue anything too. There there's requirements of 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 coordinating that off where they sit when they have alcohol and everything.
Yeah, OLCC, OLCC makes sure that the local permits have been issued. And we've been dealing with them periodically for the public passageway permits that allows the tables and chairs and stuff of the sidewalk.
Okay. My question about the parklet was, so if you build, if you build a parklet and you have your tables out basically on the street, then there will be no tables on the sidewalk? Will there be tables on the sidewalk and tables in the parklet?
You can't have both.
You can.
As long as you, as long as you maintain that adequate public passageway.
What's adequate?
I think it's four or five feet.
Yeah, I think it's, I think that's right.
Six and four.
I have a husband who's got problems that put him in one of the little gizmos that you drive around. And how is that going to be handled with the parklets? Is that going to be easy or impossible? The curbs are impossible. He's either got to be in the street or on the sidewalk.
Yeah, actually, that's a really good point. So our our code, which is Maldoloft Other Ones, says that the platform has to be at the same level as the curb. Now, if you go out to Running Dogs and you look at the curb in the street, you'll see the curb is all over. And so what they're going to do is have a section with a ramp with a very mild grade as the entrance and exit point from the ramp, which should be accommodating to those who are using mobility assistance.
That sounds like it's quite plausible, it could work real well.
I know that I've walked along there with my dogs when they had the sidewalk filled. And I really didn't have a way through. I went out in the street to get around down the sidewalk. So I think that can happen. They've had their chairs pushed back or who knows what they were doing, but.
It could, yes. And the the parklet is going to test that and it's possible. You know, we haven't really had to be too aggressive about the public passageway rules, they seem to work well. But yes, I agree, that could be a choke point. And it may be something where we just have to, if we get complaints or if we observe it, just tell them, look, you know, you have to make sure you police this. Don't give us a reason to have to be revokers.
Do the adjacent property owners or merchants have any say in in the decision? Were they notified or?
They they are required, we're, we are required to notify abutting property owners and or businesses. And, you know, the question for us that we kind of talked about at this first meeting is if we should go above and beyond that just for a further reach. But at the same time, it's it's a six month allowance.
Yeah.
And 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 the funny thing is when Jenny and I were out there taking measurements, the gentleman who owns Plymouth Pub was there. And he was lukewarm on the idea, for what, because of parking, right? He has a lot of older clients that go to the restaurant and notwithstanding the city parking lot, you know, like most people, they want to park close. And so I think, you know, the first trial is really going to see who comes out to the woodwork. And, you know, when I talked about parking and politics. And, you know, when I talked about parking and politics, um, to Greg's question, you know, I wasn't being snarky. That, that was being truthful. If there's people, you know, within that six months coming out saying, how can you allow this parking, 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 parking? The chances of us renewing it are much reduced. If the council is saying, you know what? We're uncomfortable with this, that's going to stop that permitting.
So is there a, an absolute set, um, pass through space or just that they will provide a space?
When we, when we approve this, the eating on the sidewalk, they have to show a diagram that has a minimum passageway of four feet. So that's what we approved. If in, if in practice, it's not happening that way, then they're in violation of what we've approved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It could have been someone, I can't remember what the situation was. Could have been someone else walking their dog or they stopped there to talk to people and.
Right.
Blocked away. It wasn't diners necessarily, but it just was, it wasn't a big deal to me. I just walked around. There was no traffic or anything, but I just got, I just got to thinking about that with the parklet. It could be, uh, you know, just a complete block and they can't get to that business next door or the one down the street safely.
Oh, sure. So someone in a mobility device or with a baby stroller.
Yeah.
There are all kinds of community and, um, you know, we don't want a situation that's hazardous for anybody.
I just heard you say at one point that with the parklet, uh, they're out there and they're not on the sidewalk. So that's why I asked it in the first place.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, maybe they're cool.
Yeah.
I knew too. But I think that he's got to open up some parking.
There's a city lot across from the theater. It's always empty.
I know it.
They're afraid to park.
Yeah, that's, that's the real crux is to, to, how do you get people to embrace that parking lot?
I think they think it's.
More, more parklets.
Yeah, more parklets.
Go to.
Well, you could have a christening ceremony and throw a party.
I'm sure Running Dogs will promote it. I mean.
Maybe have a city parking lot sign, uh, you know, wayfinding.
A big one across the, the, the whole thing.
Yeah, right in front, on the, on the outside of the parklet, outside of the parklet, hanging on that.
Making you back from a couple of parks.
Parking that way. Put your bellyache in.
You know, the, the Plymouth should be glad Running Dog is there. The other night, people that were waiting for outdoor tables, they were going across the street to the Running Dog and having a drink while they waited. So hey, working together.
He didn't come out against it. He was just.
Oh, no.
Warm.
I'll have to tell him when I'm down there.
We have a place in Florida and there's a small street with all the restaurants and they have a distant parking lot and the restaurants have golf carts, so they pick you up. At the parking lot and drive you to the restaurant.
Only in Florida.
If we did that, you'd realize how silly it is that you can't walk.
They let you ride it.
I'd like to change the topic for a second. Do we know, uh, have we heard any more about the appeal?
Luba?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I've been talking with our legal counsel in the last couple of days quite a bit. Um, put the record together. That should go out tomorrow. And then, um, the intervenor, and I, there is an intervenor, which is, um, the original appellant, because it is Schlumpberger versus City of St. Helens. Um, since it was your decision as the planning commission representing the city. So the intervenor will be, uh, Dan Kearns. And then, um, you know, Boljanic, those folks for the Schlumpbergers. So yeah, it goes out tomorrow, 14 days for comments on the record. Hopefully the record's good. Um, I've been pretty organized from the beginning knowing, well, there's a chance of Luba. But we'll see what they have to say. And then, um, after that, we'll get a date and see what happens. But that's what I know so far.
Who, who do, who do we have representing the city?
Um, Jordan Ramus, Tim Ramus is the principal that we, um, have and he was, he's been with us for a long time. The same guy who, uh, was with us for the marijuana case in 2018. Um, but of course that was more of, um, two local attorneys battling out. So we didn't need to provide much input on that one. And then, uh, of course, the even more famous earth removal case of 1415.
Okay. All right. Well, let's hope that our batting average continues at a thousand.
Yeah, it'll be interesting.
I also see that we're losing our public works director.
Um, no.
Oh.
The count, this is something the council has been talking about for, God, I don't know how long now. Um, but we've, our last public works director, well, yes, yeah, we lost our public works director Dale Goodman many, many years ago.
Right.
And when he left, what the city did is they took the field, public works field supervisor position and the city engineer position and said, okay, well, we're going to mash you together and make you co-directors.
Ooh.
And, um, that field supervisor Neil Shepherd walked off into the sunset in retirement, leaving Sue as the interim person. And they've been talking about having, um, a dedicated public works director. Um, we had some interviews. And, um, had three finalists, I think it was three. And that didn't work out. Um, and one of them was Sue. Um, but I think they're going to re-advertise, Council Carlson may know more about what they're doing now. I'm not as in on, on it.
I was just waiting to see how far you got. Um, yeah, I mean, that was basically it where there was one other candidate that the council really felt strongly about. And so it's like, when you start going to the second one and what if the second one says no, then you're going to number three and you only interviewed three. So then it's like, are you really selecting? I thought maybe with all the COVID, because we posted for this right in the middle of COVID. And we've all this stalling around and pushing it out for time. And it's like, let's just start fresh. And it's just about, I mean, I think that the original making them co-directors happened around the budget cuts of oh eight with all the crash of oh eight, when they were, the city was looking for a lot of ways to save money. Was why, we'll just put this off for a while and save some money to get us through hard spots. It was never designed that we would not ever have a public works director. We're not getting rid of Sue by any stretch of the imagination. She's a wonderful, talented, great public works employee. I'm her, her, her experience and her service is tremendously valued. So I don't want anybody to think that we're getting rid of her, that we don't appreciate her. But it's the interview process and the city made the, the council made the decision to go and recast to see if we'd get a different pool of applicants, not in the COVID, or maybe now that people, whatever with the COVID, we'll see how it goes. Cause I haven't even seen preliminary reports back from the posting. But yeah, we were, I mean, we had like 16 applicants. We narrowed it down to eight and we entered, we were supposed to interview four and of the four, only three showed up. So it was like the, the field trank really fast. And so we kind of felt pressured and that's like, maybe we should just start over rather than doing any, me, any, miney mo. So. After we are, they were good candidates. It just kind of felt rushed into picking one and we'd rather, that's a big decision. And you shouldn't feel hurried into making a decision.
Okay. Right. It doesn't sound like anybody else wants to speak. Do we have any, uh, information items to be brought up? Beyond what we've talked about.
Uh, the middle school is actually done.
Wow.
As of this morning. They had four wheel stops to put in for some parking spaces and that was the last part of that.
Uh, I mentioned last meeting that we were going to see more variances and Emerald Meadows, and we were able to work those out without a variance. So. That's awesome.
Your fault.
Yeah.
Um, does this group, did they see the proposal or did they hear the information about the sidewalks on Vernonia Road? Everybody knows about the sidewalks in front of the high school, right? The completed street. Well, they're using SDCs to put, do safe passage down Old Vernonia Road down and around, and there'll be a way for the kids and everybody to get into Campbell Park. Because that's, we've had dozens of complaints about near misses with dogs and children on that road, just in the time I've been affiliated with the city. So there's some community members out there. So if you hear, we don't have $3.2 million to make a street like Gable Road. We have enough money to put sidewalks where they belong. So if you hear that somebody's, we're, we're putting a sidewalk in their yard. Uh, we are putting a sidewalk in the right of way, but you know how that goes. We have 70 foot right of ways and people assume some of that is their front yardage. So there's just conversation out there. And I thought that you guys should know that that was, it's been vetted, planned, it's being surveyed, it's being marked. Sue is all on it and is taking the questions. But I just thought, if you guys hear things in the community, that is the issue. The sidewalks are going, are going in in the place where they would go if we were completing the street. So they won't have to come out when the street gets paved. It'll just, every, it'll be just like a completed street. We're just doing it one part at a time. So I just thought you guys should know that that's coming out, that will, um, go out to bid. Um, it looks like the first of the year, maybe works depending on how construction goes next fall. But I just thought you guys should know that that's out there because people ask the planning commission staff, they're like, what the heck's going on? And I didn't want you guys to not have heard anything.
I had one question. I was, I took a class on ADUs this week. And the city of Portland, they apparently waived the SDCs on their ADUs as long as they're adding a housing unit. You, you can't, you're not allowed to have the SDCs waived and use it for Airbnb. It has to strictly be for a, and I wondered if it ever, is that, sorry, that's my dog, um, ever been considered or what the policy.
In the time I've been on council, anytime we've waived an SDC, we've had to make it whole. So we have to come up with money somewhere else.
Yeah, so.
We, we gotta make the account whole.
I gotcha.
On, we, so in our ADU rules, when we revamped those past year or the year before, um, we specifically said that short-term, um, residential use was not allowed for them because of course the purpose is to allow more, allow more housing units. And so that's, that's a prohibited use. And then as far as SDCs, um, the way to save money on that is to not put in a second water meter. Our methodology is Old Basin Water Meter. And so if you share the same water meter, then, um, you're saving a lot of your big SDCs with your water and sewer.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay. Great.
So it's, it's not a policy, it's just understanding how the methodology works. And of course, you know, we answer that to people, but.
Most people don't want a second water meter anyway.
Yeah.
So it works.
Are you seeing permits, uh, normal levels right now with COVID or building permits? Are you?
I, I think it's normal. I don't think there's been any change.
Yeah, it's.
It seems busier.
It's, it's busy. Um, the one thing that has leveled off a little bit. And, and I don't know if it's, it may not be COVID, it just may be finally the end of this high level of insanity is new big stuff coming in. I know there was some, uh, one, at least one subdivision that was delayed from COVID. Um, there was one that's delayed because they got ahead of themselves on wetlands and stuff. Um, and honestly,
damn.
that is, we need to get caught up and I'm thankful that we don't have new stuff coming in right now.
Yeah.
Um, at least, but I mean, you know, right now we're with grocery outlets, working on their thing. So there's still a lot of big stuff going on.
So speaking of big stuff, Greystone Estates, we just, uh, voted to, uh, rezone that, right? Or to, we never, we didn't, we didn't vote on a development plan.
For Greystone?
Yeah.
By the DMV?
Yeah.
Um, we didn't have to mess with the zoning. That was a subdivision.
Yeah.
And.
But what, what goes, what gets built there? We didn't have any say on that, right?
Well, what, what gets built there is driven by two things. One zoning, of course, right? And two, they're lots. So if we look at Greystone Estates, 80 lots, two of them are commercial lots and those are larger. I, I don't know what those are going to be proposed for. So that, that could be anything. But the remaining 78 residential lots, the great majority of those are of such a size that the only use possible, unless they're consolidated, will be attached single family dwellings. Row houses, townhouses, whatever common name you want to, uh, place on those. There's a, there's a couple lots that would be eligible for detached single family dwellings. And then, um, also like one or two, if I remember right, at least based on current rules that, um, are eligible for duplexes. But by mid next year, we have to treat duplexes and single family dwellings the same, which is something that we need to start talking to you about really soon. Um, which is another reason I'm glad we don't have a lot of big new stuff coming in. So we have time to, um, tackle that. Those new rules are.
Our action was to do, to approve the subdivision. I remember, I remember the time we're saying, you know, you're going to show us the plans. Well, we don't have to, we, we don't have to worry about what the plan is. Just, it was just a subdivision decision. So, so they could put four of them together. They go with two of them together. They said, we're going to do, not do more than three, I think. Is that what they said?
Yeah, uh, our code allows two to five.
Yeah. So do we, so are we going to see that, um, come in front of planning commission? Or what?
Or is. I, I can show you something now.
Or is that, is that your decision?
That's all administrative.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Okay.
Yeah.
That's a permitted use.
Yeah.
Okay. It's, it's a possibility that development of the commercial lots will be something that goes before the commission. But as long as we don't, um, get a request to have 40 variances, then, uh, you won't be seeing it.
What if there's only 39?
Well, maybe in that case, we'll have to.
Goldilocks variants.
Yeah.
Do you have a plan? Do you have a plan already in front of you that's?
Um, yes. Uh, Chad Davis Builders. All signs indicate they're going to be the builder. Um, man, they're chomping at the bit, but they've already submitted a model home. And if you wanted to see it, I could see if we have a copy of the electronic, electronically and.
I think.
I drove by there today and the foundation's already going in.
Yeah, yeah, it was approved.
But they, they have that model home and basically they're going to, which is a pair. And they're going to echo that, um, more or less throughout the division. In fact, they've been talking to our building department about having a master plan. Um, which means that the building department reviews, you know, building type A, B, C, and D. And then those are approved. So when those are submitted, they're, they're already pre-approved. And so the, the building department review part becomes really fast. And then it's just a matter of looking at the site plan and something like that. So that's something they have inquired with. Our building official mentioned it, God, just last week, if I, if I remember right.
I remember one thing that we required was that little strip that will be a public or city property. That basically their stormwater tanks are under, basically. I think, um, that that would be a emergency vehicle access then slash pedestrian access, but it, you look at the grades, it goes out and it's a drop off to the street to, to the east. What, how's that going to work?
Um, that, that's actually a good question. So there is a, one of the requirements we had was to make sure that a, a city owned property back there, um, had some type of access. And then there's making sure we have the pedestrian access. And then we didn't mandate a second emergency vehicle access. But what we said is if you didn't have that, then because of the various rules, you're going to have to put sprinklers in your, um, homes. then because of the various rules, you're going to have to put sprinklers in your homes. And this, the developer has been talking about purchasing that city property. If they can acquire that within, you know, the subdivision timeline, then we can include that as part of one of the commercial lots. Then we don't need access to that lot. The pedestrian path will have more flexibility in where it can go. And, um, they were talking about an emergency access to shore through Meadow Park, Meadow Brook. I might, I might be getting that wrong, but I don't think that worked out. And I, and if you want to see the plat while I'm talking this, because I've looked at it recently and it's been a while since you've looked at it and some of you haven't seen it at all. So you may not know what I'm talking about. Um, so if you want me to illustrate that better, I certainly can.
Yeah, it wouldn't take much to connect with Meadow Park and come out where Snoopyland is. But if people aren't willing to make that connection, then.
Yeah, they wanted to, they wanted to build the street out and that didn't work out. And, um, they were talking about trying to get easements rights or something like that. And I don't think that worked out either.
Isn't women's resource in that?
They are in that mix, yes.
Yeah.
In fact, that city-owned property, they talked about acquiring, um, abuts that property.
Okay, silence. Anything else?
I have one more question, which everybody's going to go, oh, be quiet. Um, so it came up in conversation with the Columbia County Museum Association. We were wondering how it was decided the boundaries of the Holton Business District. Did you use historical records or how did you determine the boundaries of that?
Oh, that's so funny that you asked. So I had that same question. So Holton Business District, the concept was created before I started working here in August of 2007. August 27th of 2007. I started on my birthday. And I, I remember specifically asking Skip, what, what was determining the boundary? And he told me that it was arbitrary.
Makes sense then. We were looking at it and.
There was, there was a first draft and then a couple of people asked to be included. Opas or whatever it is now, Dance Studio asked to be included. So it was massaged a little bit through the public hearing process, but it was generally arbitrary.
Um, excluded on purpose.
Didn't originally, uh, Jacob, didn't it have something to do with the original Holton District? Back when there were three communities? Wasn't that the basis for?
Oh, sure. Yeah. I mean, that, look at the name. And it's more or less that uptown area.
Right. And then they just added a couple of additional ones that have requested to be included. Yeah.
And, and people have pointed out to me, well, Holton was on the other side of the highway too.
Yeah.
That's true. That's true.
Jacob, do we?
On Thursday, isn't the museum doing a presentation at two Holton District?
I think so. That's what, that's why we were discussing it was we were wondering how the boundaries were determined.
Two o'clock Thursday.
Whereabouts?
Uh, it's online.
It's online. I can send it to you, Russ.
Jenny?
Yeah. Of course.
Is it recorded?
Um, they haven't been.
I don't think so.
I watched some of the tours, but I still work during all the days. So it's nice when some of them are recorded so I can watch them later.
No, I don't think the Thursday ones have been recorded. Cause I've told others about them and they haven't been there.
It's a membership benefit. So I don't know that they, although they wouldn't not allow somebody in, I don't believe. So.
What I've done, if I've known someone's going, I get there a little early and tell Les they're coming.
Yeah, so.
Jacob, do we have any hearings for November already scheduled?
Or October?
October, yeah.
You know, it's weird. I, I expected to have hearings for this one, but then, um, the people didn't move as fast as I thought. I.
The only thing I can think of is potentially the port, but I don't know.
Yeah, right, right now, all I have under October are two question marks.
Okay, so we may not, we may not need a meeting in October if we don't hear anything in the next couple of weeks.
Will you send us a, um, message to let us know?
Now, you, you'll just join the Zoom meeting alone, Catherine.
No, I don't think so. I'm not a big, uh, this is okay. I really very much appreciate that you allowed me to come here to do this. I'm, my computer is not Zoom friendly.
Yeah.
Well, we'll get you one. Jacob promised.
We did. Can I, can I dictate what brand it is and all that stuff?
Oh yeah, color, you, you name it. Yeah. Games, whatever you need.
Be talking, Russ, and I'll just move my mouth. So it's like I'm talking.
Yeah. Exactly. So we may not have another meeting.
Well, we, if we get something, but unless there's something that I'm not thinking of, but.
Well, may, maybe this would be a good time to give rid of some of that office stuff that we've been talking about, getting into if we have time. Cleaning off some of our desk and stuff.
Yeah, usually it's text amendments, but we're doing housing, housing text amendments.
Yeah. So the, the duplex thing, that's something that we need to get cracking on pretty quick. And in a perfect world, I, I would like to do duplexes and cottage clusters. But the duplex one, so the duplex, the duplex one's interesting because we, we have to adopt something by, I think, June of 2021. And if we don't, the state law automatically takes over. And, um, the state law is pretty aggressive and I think if that one takes over by default, I had to look at my notes again, but I think it says we can't require any parking at all. But even if we do adopt our rules, we are limited to only allowing one parking space per dwelling unit. And so that's going to force us to be like, okay, well, so for a detached, single family dwelling, we require two per dwelling when you, so it's just one, but a duplex is just, so, um, that's, it's going to be interesting to see if we, you know, recalibrate our parking standards or we just say, well, a duplex, single family dwelling, pretty much the same. And I think that's what the state law is trying to get at.
Do you, do you think that that might make us not give away skinny streets as street vacations?
Um, skinny streets. So, and that's a, that's a good question.
If you have a row of duplexes and they only have one parking spot for each one, it's going to be more important than ever to have a standard street.
Two, they'll have two each for each, one for each dwelling.
Right. But right now, most houses in this town have at least two vehicles per dwelling.
Or three or four.
That, that's a, that's an excellent point.
Driver have two vehicles. They have a truck and/or they have a sport vehicle and a commuter car.
And a boat.
And three that don't work.
I just thought the, the whole concept of parking and streetscape takes on a whole new meaning with the new requirements.
Yeah. So that, and that's another good point. I'm glad you brought that up is, you know, so under what circumstances do we allow skinny streets? And then how ham, hamstrung are we by the state rules? And so I'm pretty anxious to dive into it. Cause I want to do a thorough, comprehensive job and hopefully we have time to do that.
It could be, you think that, um, that covenants and restrictions, will the new house bill, will that supersede? Like if a neighborhood says no duplexes or no?
Yeah, that, that's a really good question. So us as a government, you know, we, we couldn't say no to a duplex. And will an association still have that power? Notwithstanding state laws and applies to governments, I mean, government typically doesn't get into color of houses and stuff like that, but HOA still does. And, um, I think there's going to be probably some real test cases out there for that. Cause I'm sure some neighborhoods with a strong association who don't want to see a duplex will probably try that aggressively. And I, I think the other question of St. Helens is, you know, we see a lot of single family dwellings. We see a lot of row housing. We don't see a whole lot of duplexes and will this change just be something in our books or will it be something that people flock to?
Yeah.
I think. About all the duplexes that Mr. Wiegans, I mean, you look at all his duplexes, there are all duplexes around. There's a lot of them.
Yeah, he's the exception.
Okay. But I think we need to look at the, look at that, uh, pretty carefully and pick it apart of what's requirement coming down because I've seen some neighborhoods just lose their character over people that need to put in more and more. You know, they call it affordability, but I'm sorry, it's not. And it just really trashes some neighborhoods and, and, uh, it's, uh, you know, it, I think it's just a grab for more taxes. Because you'll get more investment on the property and you get more taxes out of a smaller area of the city. That's my.
Russ, you gave away the secret.
Okay, I'm done.
But yeah, it is, I, I agree. It's something that we need to look at very carefully.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll be doing that in the next couple of months or before, next year.
Yes, I, I, when Jenny and I were talking about it, we're saying, oh, we got to start in September. Of course, here we are in September. And so, yeah, it's on my mind and as each day and week goes po, go, goes by, I get more and more anxious about it.
We're also wrapping up the St. Helens Industrial Business Park Plan. Um, and so that's a process that's taking up both of our times too.
Has anyone proposed any condos in there for industrial uses? Not like to live in, but you know, industrial condos where somebody puts up a building and then they.
Like a spec building, you mean?
Well, yes. I mean, envision it calling it a condo, but it's really an industrial use. Somebody puts a big building in each bay is a different owner, like a condo would be.
That's what, that's what the port of, uh, that's what the port of Columbia County is proposing for multi-way development that was just added to the urban growth boundary.
Urban renewal area, yeah.
Urban renewal.
The, the, the plan that we're working on, it doesn't prohibit that. It basically looks at, okay, where are we going to put our roads? How do we want to parcelize things? And then, um, the latest thing is infrastructure financing. And so when you have the parcels, if someone wants to use that for a police station or for, um, you know, the industrial condo issue, um, you know, both, both are possible under the zoning. So there's nothing that would prohibit it.
Makes that more affordable?
It just, it makes it more shovel ready is what this plan does. Yeah.
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 Never heard the term shovel ready before, but it sure is, um.
Keeps popping up tonight.
Right on a point.
Yeah.
But it's, 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 I mean, we have a lot of industrial property and if we take the right steps, you know, several years from now, we'll have a robust, multi-tenanted industrial area providing valuable tax base.
It seems to me that way back in the distant past, St. Helens had a community. And was known as a community that was a paycheck town.
Yeah.
1928. We were the, I, there's an ad that was, came out in the.
Payroll city?
Yeah, 1928, we're the town of prosperity and we were the highest, I forget what it was, something about payroll. I mean, in the United States. I'll have to pull it up and show you guys next time.
You don't, you don't have to go back to 1928, back in 1976, when I first came here. St. Helens was quite the, uh, quite the economic driver. And then things started really, uh, going downhill shortly after.
Well, after Trojan closed.
Well, not even after Trojan closed, uh, we lost a good, uh, part of our lumber, uh, community uh, because of the spotted owl controversy back in the 1980s. Uh, that's when we lost a lot of our lumber mills. And, uh, but unfortunately, fortunately for us, we still had Boise Cascade. Uh, we still had, uh, well, it wasn't Shell, but the, uh, the plan over in Columbia City. And, uh, uh, we still had, uh, the one, uh, the old Niedermeyer Martin plant. So things were still moving, but it was starting to go down. But then Trojan came in and that helped in increase our, uh, residential base because we had so many additional people moving in who worked into a Trojan. So. But, uh, yeah, 1976 was pretty, things were moving pretty well.
And there's, there's new things in the region, um, like the airport stuff. And as that grows, that'll spill, you know, they'll want industrial land and we're a, uh, sitting nearby. Plus the waterfront. And that, that's why we need to be careful in how we plan and invest in that industrial property, um, to maximize its value, to be diversified, to make up for some of the losses of, um, the big industry of the past.
Are you saying that we can't dedicate it all to marijuana?
Well, of course, that's ultimately going to be up to the city council, but I suspect it will be more than just a giant pot farm.
Let's hope so.
Yeah, because the three employees they have, that really make.
Let's hope.
What man?
Let's hope more sober, uh, action happens. So.
Nice choice of words.
Well, if nothing else, uh, I would propose we adjourn.
I second it.
All right. Motion seconded. Um, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you.
See ya.